Okay, welcome to the City of Littleton Planning Board. Tonight we have a couple hearings that are from a, it's actually a continuance from a hearing on September, what date was that, 18th? Whenever our last hearing was. The 25th, I'm sorry. I wasn't here, so didn't quite remember the date. So the first thing we'll do is roll call.
Remember Bolt? Here, Suzanne.
Here.
Or then, Hellrod.
Here.
Or then, Graham.
Here.
Or then, Moore.
Here.
Or then, Emerson.
Here.
Or then, Peter.
Or then, Miles.
Here.
Thank you. First item approval of the agenda, I'd like to suggest to the board an agenda change. Well, not a change, but regarding the public comment, I'd like to just go ahead and have it open to all who want to speak on both studies. If that's in agreement with everybody. So that's how we'll handle the public comment.
Will be at the same time or separately?
Same time. And I'll reiterate how we're going to handle it once we get to it, which will be very soon. Next item will be approval of the minutes through certification of the video. And I'll state right up front, just so that everybody knows that I am up to speed, I did watch the video and so I heard all the prior comments and presentations on the two cases. So do I have a motion on the certification of the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, go ahead and vote. Okay, the certification passes. This time we'll entertain any attendees who want to address the board on matters not being considered tonight. So if you just want to talk to the board about something that's on your mind, this is the time. Yes ma'am. Approach the, after, we'll go here and then we'll go back there. And then when you come to the podium, state your name and address and you can state what you want to say.
Hello, my name is Gloria Shone and I live at 7975 South DeTuro Circle West, that's in Southbridge. And I'm here tonight, I'd like to speak a few minutes about eminent domain and tax incremental financing. I'm sure you've heard a few words about that. I can think of-
If you would pause one second, I will hold this. Is that related to our topic? Or is it?
Yes, is it about the urban renewal plans? Pardon? Is it about the urban renewal plans?
The what?
Is it related to the urban renewal plan?
To financing with relation to the urban renewal plans?
The specific ones under discussion tonight? No.
It's a general discussion?
In general, yeah.
Okay. Go ahead.
Well, I can think of a few valid, prospectively valid reasons to use those tools, such as if you're building a community center, which Littleton already has one, so we don't need to do that. Or a college, which we already have that, and we don't need another one. Or a transportation hub, we have two of those. Or even maybe an amphitheater, but we already have those. But what we're talking about now is taking money from our schools and our park district, from the city and the county, and giving it to private interest to compete-
Excuse me ma'am, that sounds like we're talking about the project, the studies that we're addressing in the public hearing. You're welcome to speak to those during the public hearing, if you'd like, or the public comment.
I'm not here to address those two that are up tonight, in particular.
Then, when you say we're taking money away, what is, we are referring to?
If we use these tools-
Okay.
Especially the tax incremental financing, we would be taking money from those entities that I just spoke of and giving them to developers and businesses to go into competition with businesses that have already invested their own money and others that are on your agenda here, are on your list, long list of projects that are currently before you, for people to invest their own resources and put their own lives on the line to create their own businesses and opportunities. And I don't know how we can look those people in the eye and tell them that we're going to take money from those other entities that continue to need more money from us. The school came last year, this year, the park board has a ballot issue, initiative to, not initiative, but an issue, to raise taxes. And they're eventually going to find that they're not raising what they thought they were because of the tax incremental financing, if we do that. So then, the, we and those other businesses that have invested their own money would likely end up having to pay more because those same people, the schools and the parks, would have to come to us again for even more money. It's not a level playing field, I don't know how we can even be considering this, there is private capital out there. And I understand that Gates redevelopment, that huge thing, is private money. And Littleton is certainly worthy of attracting private money, they have in the past with all of these businesses that we already have. And I see some of the, these that are before you now, they involve retail, they involve housing of various sorts, single family, multi-family, the very same things we'd be giving the money to other developers to go head to head to compete with these people. And I hope that you'll do whatever we need to do to keep that from happening. Thank you.
Okay. And actually, I want to apologize to you because the hearing tonight is not about financing.
Why no, that's why it's-
That's why I'm apologizing that-
The four minute-
When I get to the hearing, I'll explain that it's not about financing. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we got one more in the back. I want to apologize, I'm fighting a cold, so I'll be sniffling every now and then.
Let's see if I can get the projector working before the timer starts.
I won't start it until you-
It's not, actually, that's probably me to fill, but. I have two items tonight, one is a continuing-
Name and address.
Oh, sorry, Pam, how could I forget? Pam Chadburn, Crestline in Nevada, District One. So, I have two items tonight, one is about, one is a, one in a continuing series of things about the process of the city and the planning board. But first, I'd like to mention, a friend of mine and a person who was engaged with Littleton City Government was killed in a car accident at 9:00 PM, September 2nd, on Federal Boulevard, in those townhomes. And the reason I want to bring this up, other than that it's a tragedy in our city, is that there are probably improvements that need to be here. I don't think there's any crosswalk in the intersection that she was crossing at. I don't think it's an issue with streetlights at all, and so there's no crosswalk, and you know the curve on Federal? And it, the speed limit is 40 miles an hour. Do you think a pedestrian has a chance? Well, she didn't. So, I wanted to mention that to you because I've mentioned many times that I think we need a list of infrastructure improvements that are required, they need to be prioritized. And I want to bring that up because someone has died. So, let me say that. So, this is, Phil Surinick, the mayor, urges us to be positive, and for me, this is a collaborative inclusive timeline concept to Plan Littleton 2.0. And the timeline, I'm sorry, it's not as clean and nice as it could be, but it starts with, in this case, a urban renewal survey and plan, but actually, this could be, just open it up to any kind of plan. So across the top, it says engage the team and gather data, then amend the comprehensive plan, right-size NEUR areas, and amend and improve urban renewal plans. And the vision here is that Historic Preservation Board is called out. I didn't bring this down, but the Littleton Independent did an article about the Colorado Preservation Inc. survey of endangered places, Littleton has many sites. Historic Preservation Board could also look at view sheds in Littleton and museum and put and gather that and contribute to the process. Staff has a lot to contribute, including infrastructure priorities, which I've mentioned before and just mentioned, with more urgency. And budget projection models, traffic projections, services that are needed over the next 40 years, whatever, police, fire. And Planning Board has a role. And then there's a cluster of other people who are concerned with these matters and have knowledge and opinions to contribute. I want to mention some of them, I mean, other government entities and municipalities are in counties, Dr. Cog, RTD, Lift is one, Citizens are homeowners and renters, they're certainly a big constituency, visitors, businesses, and developers. And Planning Board, to me, is integral to this. And I kind of pointed my arrow at the charrettes and neighborhood and corridor meetings and charrettes and discussions about this. But this is what has happened. And Planning Board, to me, is the largest exclusion here because I think you have a vital role in developing this. Instead, over here at the right, we have declared NEUR areas, and Planning Board had nothing to do with that, neither did Citizens, nobody had anything to do with the NEUR areas except for Lift, the city manager, community development, and developers. That is not appropriate in Littleton, it's not good for us. I've said before, where's the spit and vinegar? Insert yourself in this process, you do not serve at the pleasure of the council, you are independent, unless there's reason for cause, you should not be dismissed. You have a role for us, and I want you to play it. So thanks for your consideration.
Would anyone else like to address a topic? Okay. So, we're going to start, we're going to open it up to public comment, is there a list?
Yep.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry? Yeah, I forgot about that, yeah. So we're not going to do the public comment yet. First, we're going to just do a brief summary, just for those who weren't here last time or didn't watch the video, or see the video. We're not going to present the entire presentation, Ann's not here, but Jim is, but we'll start with Glenn, just to give your presentation, and then we'll go to Jim.
Extremely brief, Mr. Chairman. But yes, I did want to mention that we do have Jim Taylor, who's the chairman of the Lift Board here, and Jim Reese, Executive Director of Lift. And we do expect Ann Ricker, who is running a little late, but she should be here to answer your questions. So, the only thing I wanted to mention is that staff is recommending that you make a finding that the proposed urban renewal plans are consistent with our comprehensive plan, as we stated for the various reasons in the staff report. You certainly can recommend denial of, or make the findings that the urban renewal plans are not consistent with the comprehensive plan. We just ask that you provide reasons to give council reasons for why you feel they are not consistent with the comprehensive plan. With that, I think I just want to turn it over to our Deputy City Attorney, Kristen Schliedorn, who wants to provide you a little bit of background as well.
I just want to clarify something that Glenn said, your recommendation to the council is whether the plans are in conformance with the comprehensive plan, or they are not in conformance with the comprehensive plan. Your recommendation is not to approve the plan or to deny the plan, it's either that they're in conformance or they're not. And I just want to reiterate what City Attorney Feldman advised you last time, that you have a very limited scope here in front of you, your duty is just simply to review those plans for conformance with the comprehensive plan. I know that there were a lot of issues that were raised by the public at the last hearing, and those just simply aren't within your purview, to the extent that they're outside whether or not these plans conform with the comprehensive plan. So it's not your responsibility to weigh in on whether these are good plans, or bad plans, or well-written, whether the conditions of blight were appropriately found, what property should be included, what property shouldn't have been included. You have a plan in front of you, that's the plan you're looking at, and that's the plan you're going to provide a recommendation on.
Well, good evening, Jim Reese, Executive Director of the Lift, Littleton Investor Tomorrow. We're not going to go through the entire presentation that we did last time, I think you all saw that quick and had enough of that. I just wanted to reiterate tonight, you know, we are asking, Lift is asking, for the Planning Board to find that the urban renewal plans before you are in compliance and conformance with a comprehensive plan. Just wanted to kind of reiterate the purpose of why we're doing all this, is really mainly to implement city plans for redevelopment and infill. And this designation as an urban renewal areas will be able to provide the tool to do that. And the tool, speaking of course, is tax increment financing. And the tax increment financing, based on the increment created by the projects, the very projects themselves, will provide funding to be able to create the infrastructure that's needed in these areas that is typically extraordinary in a redevelopment project. A lot of people refer to this as kind of leveling the playing field with greenfield or, you know, brand-new development, because basically redevelopment projects are harder, they're more expensive, utilities need to be upgraded, infrastructure needs to be upgraded. So, that's kind of the purpose of what we're talking about tonight. By doing so, we're going to increase employment opportunities, stop leakage, tax leakage to other communities, we can create affordable housing, we can promote infill rather than sprawl, clean up environmental issues, provide remediation, create public amenities, upgrade public safety, and the list goes on. But that is kind of the goal of what we're here tonight. Again, it's a funding mechanism, as we talked about last time, it's not here to usurp any powers as far as land use. All those decisions still come through the Planning Department and the Planning Board for final decision on land use and development. So, I'm here, Jim's here, hopefully Ann will be here shortly, and we're all happy to answer any questions you may have had after spending a couple weeks reviewing the plans.
Could you explain the different roles between Jim and Jim?
Between Jim and Jim?
Yeah.
I'm the Executive Director, I guess the best way to analyze this would be kind of comparing the mayor versus the city manager type approach, that's kind of where we are. I do the day-to-day run the operation kind of things and prepare all the plans and that type of thing. Jim, of course, is in charge of the board.
So, we address our questions to you?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I think we just go ahead and open it up to public comment, thank you.
Okay.
And then after that, we will have our questions and then get into discussion. Before we start the public comment, I'll reiterate, both studies or plans, urban renewal plans are open for public comment at the same time. And you'll have four minutes, as usual, and then the board will discuss and vote on each study or plan separately, because they're two separate resolutions. So, we'll do one, and then we'll do the other. And then, also, you have heard it two or three times now, but I also want to reiterate what the board's charge is tonight. These are two urban renewal plans before us. Conditions surveys have already been approved and really are not up for discussion or change. And impact assessments are for council. Our responsibility as a board is to determine whether the urban renewal plan is in conformance with the comprehensive plan. And that is the narrow scope. We're not here to debate which properties and why they were chosen and how the condition survey was put together and all that. That's already been taken care of through approval. Now, in a later date, the council can choose to do what they want on that, so. So let's get into public comment. And we start with, see, Bo has a lot of question marks. Where's Bo? Do you wish to speak? You have question marks on everything. We don't know where you stand.
I don't agree with you either.
Okay.
So, I'm-
Please state your name and address, please.
Bo Ostmer, from 5198 South Lowell. And the reason why I have a lot of question marks is, we don't know where we stand, I guess. We're, I guess, new to the whole idea of what's going on there, we're business owner. And so we're kind of, and I understand how you said that it's not about if you were chosen to be in this, that was kind of already decided or whatnot. But, I guess the question mark is where it's going, or how soon it's going to go there. That's kind of, kind of where the question mark's falling. But, we've, our family's owned that property for about six years now. It's a gas station. I know there's, I think in the past, have been issues with the site there, and we've basically cleaned it up. It's very close to a clean site, it's about the best you can get for a gas station. So our site has had remediation, you know, part of the state, the OPS and- We've also done a lot of remodeling and upgrades to what we can do for the, for the store and the site. Place has brand-new tanks and everything else. But, so, we're kind of concerned, you know, and I'm going to go back to probably that word, that blighted word that was used for that area. But we were kind of concerned and just kind of didn't know where we stand with that term, although we've tried to do our part for that section of the property, you know, to, to make it as best as it could be, I guess. But I'm hoping to get, you know, a few of those answers for those question marks, basically, for that.
Those two guys right there.
Yeah. So yeah, we'll talk with them as well, but that's kind of our reason. Just kind of want to hear exactly what everybody's stance or whatnot is for the issue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Did you want to speak? Or were you telling me the clock was not on? Please come to the podium. Everybody has to be heard, because they're on video. So state your name and address, please.
My name is Feryal, 5198 South Lowell Boulevard, Columbine Square, the Conoco Gas Station. I wanted to say thank you for giving us a chance to come and speak here. We, you know, we just heard about the renovation, you know. I'm kind of excited about it, I have to say. We did our part, as my husband said. I read on the newspaper, somebody said there's a lot of contaminated soil and a lot of, you know, dirty tanks and stuff. But my father, who is the owner, he paid a lot of money to upgrade and keep up with all of the regulations and all of the city. You know, even putting a 24-hour payphone out there, it's one of the regulations you have to have for keeping the gas stations on for 24 hours. So we paid attention to all of the requirements. Now, it's kind of very hard to keep in track and stay in the business, actually, because of the area, as you guys know, after searching this project. I want to say thank you to Jim, because I'm hoping it's going to be much better with helping all of the drainage, maybe underground tanks, and keeping the area better. So I'm hoping that is, you know, we, even my father even kind of considered maybe putting the place for sale. But if this project is going to help us get improved and help for the business owners to make it much better, helping for our schools, for our parks, because I know some of the tax money goes there, and the rest kind of goes wherever it needs to be. If it's going to help and get better, if you guys can also help us resolve this issue we are having, if we should keep, you know, continuing to stay there, or if it's going to get better or not, basically, that's our concern. My father, he's from Turkey, and then he said, "Go talk, see what's happening, what's coming in our future." It's hard to, I understand it's 25 years or something in the next future, but I, you know, if you want to get some answers, I know the decision's supposed to be in October 7 for this part, but if you can answer those and help us kind of give him good news, you know, not taking any money from schools or the parks, supporting them, but also getting our place much better to serve and get the Littleton improved. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Neiser? Neese, I was going to say that.
My name is Susan Neese, and it's 7301 South Highland Drive. I'm a resident of Littleton. I'm here tonight to speak regarding two major concerns specific to the Santa Fe Urban Renewal Plan, and which I have emailed to this board about. The first is my belief that the proposed plan involves illegal and unlawful actions. Specifically, the actions are the placement of approximately 125 acres of agricultural lands into the urban renewal area, making up almost half of that area, when the lands do not meet the requirements of CRS 3125-1071C Roman numeral 3, which are in place from June 1, 2010 until June 1, 2020. Lift's executive director, Mr. Reese, in a letter to me, stated these are not requirements, but rather an additional exception for agricultural lands, and that the agricultural lands only have to meet the conditions of one of the five exceptions listed under exception C, Roman numeral 2 of the statute. I believe he is incorrect, and I'm not alone in my reading and understanding of the statute. On the website of the well-esteem downtown Denver law firm, Otten Johnson, there's an article titled "Limits Imposed on Colorado Urban Renewal Areas", written by one of their land use attorneys. It states, "For the next 10 years, agricultural land may only be included in a URA if, in addition to at least one of the five factors above, the following two factors are also met. One, the person owning such land on June 1, 2010 also owns land within the URA that is contiguous to the agricultural land; and two, such land is developed solely for the purpose of manufacturing operations." The article goes on to say, "Practically, this legislation completely eliminates the possibility of including agricultural land within an urban renewal area for at least 10 years and likely well beyond." In addition, until tonight's handouts, nowhere could I find it mentioned in the proposed Santa Fe Urban Renewal Plan posted on the City of Littleton website that there were agricultural lands in the area, their legal descriptions are how they met the conditions in order to be included in said area, as required by CRS 3125-107D. I did not see any legal descriptions for the urban renewal area in general, or the TIF area, even though it stated there is an appendix B and C which should contain these. There was no attachment 1 regarding the Santa Fe Area Condition Survey, nor attachment 2 regarding the impact report. Aren't these documents supposed to be before you and the public, prior to the public hearings? The other concern is what seems to be a similar glaring omission regarding the required findings concerning the inclusion of open lands pursuant to CRS 3125-1075 and 6. Mr. Reese, in his letter, states that, quote, "The authority has found the plan to be in compliance with these requirements. A finding of such will also be included in the council resolution." I'm not aware of when or where these findings regarding the open lands were made by Lift, and would think they would have needed to be in the plan brought before the planning board, before the plan proceeds to council. In summary, I believe that due to the requirements of CRS 3125-1071C Roman numeral 3, the proposed Santa Fe Area Urban Renewal Plan is unlawful and illegal with its inclusion of agricultural lands. As a result, I do not see how the planning board can recommend the plan as is. In addition, I believe the statutorily required findings regarding agricultural lands and open lands have not been made or included in the documents before this board. I do not see how you can properly proceed without having all findings and required information before you. Thank you.
Thank you. Betty Harris, you said you didn't want to speak, or? Okay. She did mark not in favor. Ray Fletcher is not in favor and said did not want to speak? Is that correct? Pam Calaborn? I got that wrong. Chadborne?
Sorry, it's kind of a rude slide, and the clock should start.
I'm sorry?
I'll wait for the clock to start.
Oh, sorry. Thank you.
I'm Pam Chadborne at Crestline in Nevada in District 1. So it's a rude slide, because it says what planning board must do, but it's what I would do if I were sitting in your chair. Vote that the proposed urban renewal plans do not conform with the general plan for the development of the municipality as a whole. There are two main reasons, in my opinion. One is that they don't include feasibility analyses that would allow you to assess whether the claimed benefits will or can actually be accomplished. And the other reason is that the proposed plans do not include risk identification and mitigation. The failure of urban renewal would handicap, slow, or destroy the possibility of accomplishing the goals that you have in the comprehensive plan. You have no reason to believe these are going to work. There's nothing there that tells you to do that, or allows you to make that assessment. You endanger the city if you allow these to go forward. Or at least you do not assure that they're going to conform with the comprehensive plan. And I use the word "hope" used. I heard the word "hope" used, and I'm just going to say, "Hope and $4 will buy one of us a copy at Starbucks." These are hopeful plans. They certainly say they're going to do a lot of things, but it's kind of like a description of a recipe without the recipe. If you don't know what's in it, if you don't know how it's going to be made, there could be poison, there could be toxins, it could fail. You don't have what's here to evaluate it. You don't have here what you need to evaluate it. So it's already been mentioned, but the state statute does say you need to review and make a recommendation as to its conformity with the general plan for the development of the municipality as a whole. I just wanted to show my slide about Riverfront Lessons Learned. None of those are addressed in this plan. So we had a major failure with river, with urban renewal in Littleton. I'll also mention, I didn't bring this, but the Small Business Administration has a website. Whenever you start a new business, 10% will fail in the first year. 50% will fail in the first five years, and 70% will fail, do fail, in 10 years. We had a failure here. How can it be that a UR plan has no failure analysis in a way to prevent failure? And I guess I have to say, you cannot vote for it if it doesn't help us know that these are going to achieve the goals in the comprehensive plan. I'm not saying that there's a guarantee, but there's got to be something that at least indicates they can work. There's nothing. So I'll just say at the bottom here, just because the UR plans say they'll do things that match the comprehensive plan, doesn't mean they can or will succeed, or that they'll do that. I can say a lot of things. And unless you, I could say I could lift 400 pounds, but, I mean, by looking at me, if you could look at me, you could say I can't. But there is nothing in the plan that's like that look. Without assessment data, you cannot perform your due diligence to assure the comprehensive plan and goals and visions will be achieved. And without risk control, you can't perform your due diligence to assure that the comprehend, goals, in fact, will not become impossible to achieve under these proposed plans. So I, if I were in your seat, I would have no problem voting against this. It does not conform with our comprehensive plan. Neither one of them, by the way.
Thank you. Susan signed up twice. Already spoke. So we got some duplicates here. Betty's already on there. Doug Clark does wish to speak.
Good evening, commissioners.
I'm sorry, old habits. Good evening, boarders. Name and address, please.
Doug Clark, 2454 Houston-Waring. The McDonald's on the east side of Santa Fe, just north of ACC, was completely scraped and rebuilt in 2011. I believe that it opened in November. This included a new parking lot, new curb gutter and sidewalks, a new building, and new lighting. The entire project was built and met all the city's codes, including building codes, fire codes, lighting standards, and subdivision regulations. Those of you that eat there know that the property is kept in immaculate condition. The dumpster, trash cans, dumpster enclosure, parking lot, and walkways are all washed on a regular basis. The business is healthy and thriving, as evidenced by the number of people that eat there and the amount of money that the owner spent redoing the place. And yet Lift has determined that the McDonald's is blighted, listing six conditions of blight for that property, some of which are that the property is unsanitary, unsafe, and a fire hazard. Everyone who's been to that McDonald's knows that the McDonald's is obviously not unsafe, unsanitary, or fire hazard, or blighted in any way. But this inaccurate and unscrupulous blight designation is not exclusive to the McDonald's. The gas station immediately south to the McDonald's, and the ACC Flower Garden and Electronic Sign that's on the southwest corner of Church and Santa Fe has also been determined by Lift to be a fire hazard, unsafe, and unsanitary, as has the brand-new 7-Eleven down by the Aspen Grove, and numerous other properties in both of the urban renewal plans. The solutions and the actions called for in the urban renewal plans to cure the blight conditions for the properties that are listed in the urban renewal plans cannot possibly cure. Those blight conditions, since those actions have already been taken, and yet the blight still exists, according to Lift. For example, the urban renewal plan calls for installing fire suppression systems in buildings to remedy the blight condition of fire hazard. McDonald's already has fire suppression systems that meet the city code, both in the kitchen area and in the eating areas. As for ACC and the Flower Garden and the Electronic Sign, no one in this room, other than perhaps Lift, believes that a fire suppression system really needs to be installed in a flower garden, because flowers would be a fire hazard, or that installing a fire suppression system on that site would actually satisfy Lift. The urban renewal law requires an urban renewal plan to be drawn as narrowly as possible. If Lift really does not intend to use condemnation, then there's no reason for McDonald's, or the ACC property, or numerous other properties to be in the urban renewal plan, because they cannot be renewed, according to the action plan that's in the urban renewal plan, and they can't contribute to the goals and the planning of the urban renewal plan. Which means that the urban renewal plan is not only inaccurate and unscrupulous and impossible to achieve, but it also is illegal, because it's not meeting the requirements of the urban renewal law. Now, you all created the comprehensive plan. It's up to you to determine if urban renewal plans that are nonspecific, inaccurate, impossible to achieve, and illegal really do comply with the comprehensive plan. And I respectfully suggest to you that if these plans conform to the comprehensive plan, then all plans conform to the comprehensive plan, and the comprehensive plan is really therefore useless. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is it James? And do you wish to speak? You did mark that you're not in favor. And then Ray has already spoken, so we got some doubles here. Is there anyone else not on the list who'd like to address the board? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Linda Knufke at 7089 South Clay Street. I just want to build upon some of the testimony from Ms. Neese. And I just wanted to show you a summary of the Santa Fe South, a summary of the acreages, the parcels, the actual value and assessed values, so you'll see how some of the properties are zoned by the county. So for here, for Santa Fe South, you'll notice, you'll notice the, down here, the Enser property. It's owned as dry farm, class 2B, single-family residential acreage, sprinkler irrigated, class 2B, and sprinkler irrigated, class 3C. And the large animal hospital is grazing land, class 4... Or 6B, something like that. And anyways, here's an example of Santa Fe Mid. And you'll notice that... And anyways, here's an example of Santa Fe Mid, and you'll notice that Breckenridge Brewery and Designs by Sundown are classified by the county, is all other agricultural. And if you look down a little bit to the next green tick on the summary of your acreage, you'll notice that grazing land Class 6A is listed for Gary Sutton's property. So I just wanted to collaborate that there is agriculture zoned on some of those properties. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Was there another person? Okay.
I'm gonna be very brief. Last time we were in this room, Carol Briesak, 4th District, Ann Ricker, the consultant for Lyft, talked about the plan, and she told you it's really not a plan, it's a financing mechanism. Tonight, we've been told it has nothing to do with financing. I think they need to figure out what the real story is. The way I see it, it's all about a financing mechanism. It's not a plan, according to the definition of a plan, that exists in the urban renewal law. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Okay. At this time, I'll close the public comment, and I'll make the first comment to address my comment, that it was a financing, not a financing plan. What we are hearing tonight is whether the urban renewal plan is in conformance with the comprehensive plan. So what I meant was, the board is not considering any financing. So we're not, we're not here to discuss the financing capabilities of the urban renewal plan. And that's what I was saying about, it was not about finance, or it was about financing. So I'm confusing myself. Too many meds. So, I just wanted to clarify, and now I noticed that Ann walked in partway through, so if anybody has questions, questions for Ann, the consultant for the urban renewal plan, she's available too. So I'm gonna open it up to the board for questions. And again, why don't we do this? Why don't we, at this point, separate the two? Because we have to vote on them separately. Let's talk about Columbine first, the smaller one. And then we'll go into that, that motion. When that's done, then we'll open up for discussion on Santa Fe. Does that sound good?
I, I think we should start with Santa Fe. I think a lot of the comments that we heard from last time, and even tonight, is around Santa Fe. So I, I think we should continue with that. I think the comments that we've heard for Columbine have not been specific to Columbine, so I think it's, it's overall comments that have been about urban renewal. So I would, sorry, I would prefer that we just move forward and continue the discussion on Santa Fe.
It doesn't matter to me. Does everybody agree with that? Mark?
I have a question on procedure here. Is this question time? I have comments I want to make after the motion is made, and then we have finding of fact. So that'll, we'll have time for that.
This is a time for general questions of staff, or urban renewal, or Ann, to clarify your thoughts that you have. Then we will have debate on a motion, specific. So first, we will do the Santa Fe. So if you have any questions for clarification at this point, and I'm sure that general questions are actually gonna address both, because they're very similar in terms of their structure.
I can, I have a couple of questions. Should I start?
Okay, go ahead.
I have a question for Jim. The, I'd like to understand better, for the Santa Fe plan, we have, you have identified an area, which is the tax increment area, which is only one piece of the overall urban renewal, renewal plan for Santa Fe. Why is it, why was just that area identified versus the whole area?
That's a good question. Let me start from the big picture worked out. Because urban renewal plans and tax increment financing only is authorized for 25 years, in the past, when plans have been designated for a large area, and this is a fairly large area, it's almost impossible to get all the things accomplished in a 25-year period. So what the solution to that has been, and this has been done all over the state, is to basically reduce the tax increment area to a smaller area that you think you can get accomplished in a shorter period of time. So hence, in this case, the area, what you're talking about being the south, we've heard a lot of potential about possible developments coming in, in that area first, and not as much for the other areas. Does that make sense?
And then, would there be a scenario that other areas would come up over time? So another tax increment area within the urban renewal plan for Santa Fe could come forward in five years from now? The northern part of Santa Fe?
Exactly. Yeah, that's the whole science behind this, so. But at the time, you know, the base, I think you're all familiar with the base, is what the tax level is currently on that site. The base can change if you come in with a new area later, because it may have gone up, if that makes sense. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions for Jim. Because our comp plan states specifically, somewhere, under transformative action focus on activity areas and corridors, these are certainly corridors and/or activity areas, use tools such as small area plans, zoning capital improvements, and other incentives, how is this an incentive? Who benefits?
So you're asking, how does the plan?
By the financing, with the financing mechanisms, by siphoning or taking that gap money, or that, what do you call it?
Increment?
Increment financing off and putting it into a pool. Who benefits from those resources? And then how does the, how do, how does, do those funds create an incentive for quality development, which is what our comp plan calls for? How do we attract those developers with this tool? Is, is the funding that comes off of one property specifically go back to that property? Or, you know, how does that work?
Okay, that's a multifaceted question, but I'll try to answer it. So basically, what I'll call it is the but-for argument. You don't have any tax revenue, any new tax revenue off the project unless something happens, correct? And so the kind of, the catch-22 here is, the costs to do that project, as I kind of explained before, are usually pretty high compared to new construction in a new area town. So therefore, that's the need, that's the gap, if you will, that needs to be filled by a project. Okay, so that's one part of the formula. Now, to fill that gap is where the tax increment comes in. So as the project comes online, gets built, the valuation increases, that owner's paying higher taxes, that increment that's created above what was the floor, the base, goes into the project, and we can use those dollars to pay for infrastructure. So it benefits not only the city and the community, because we're upgrading all these blighted conditions and everything that we've said we wanted to address. That's number one. But it also makes the project affordable for the developer. So the next question I'm sure comes up is, well, why do you do that? And why doesn't the developer do it himself? Because we look at their developer spreadsheet. When the developer does a project, he does a spreadsheet, lists all his costs, all his financing, all that. We put it all together and look at it, and look at the return on investment. And if the return on investment isn't enough that makes the project worth doing, then it's not gonna happen. And I think that's the case in a lot of areas that haven't developed, or are underdeveloped at this point, is that they simply haven't been affordable on their own. So really what we do here, really what tax increment does is gap financing.
But who decides where the money goes?
Ah, okay. So the authority actually does that. The Urban Renewal Authority does that. And how we do that is, as I was saying, developer has to come in with a spreadsheet, volumes of spreadsheets, basically, that show us all his costs and all his financing, and the entire package, if you will. I'll take a look at it, Ann will take a look at it, we may even have a third financial consultant take a look at it, just to make sure what their bottom line is, at the bottom, is a reasonable number to expect out of a project like this. So we double, triple-check it to make sure that they're not getting a windfall, or that it's actually what's needed to make the project go.
How does a developer know they have that at their disposal? If a developer looks at a piece of property, does he, he obviously has done his homework. He knows there's an urban renewal district or plan in place. So he seeks you out to say, "Help me out."
Well, yeah, I mean, the plan basically says that tax increment financing is part of it. So if they're aware of the plan, then they know it is. And we've, and we've been approached by some people.
I guess what I'm getting at is, does our economic development group seek out developers, projects, catalyst projects, projects that we want in Littleton, that we want to attract to Littleton? And we attract them by saying, "We have this tool to help you. Come build here."
Well, that's, that's kind of exactly what we're trying to get at right here.
That's what I'm getting at.
Yeah, so we will be working.
That's why it's a tool, that's why it's an incentive.
Okay, yeah, exactly. So that's why we'd be working closely with city staff.
Right.
To try to, to make that happen.
If we want a project that has a major drainage issue, or that the city can't necessarily take care of, this is a way to help overcome that major drainage, drainage issue, floodplain issue, whatever it is, infrastructure.
And we do have a lot of that, all through the area.
Right. And then part of the reason that some properties don't develop is because the market is not strong enough to attract private interest, to pay for the, the high cost. The reason McDonald's goes where McDonald's goes is because they penciled it out and they can do it themselves. It's a great site, it's no, has no hardships.
And I want to kind of address that a little bit, too, because there may be projects that come in, and they don't need urban renewal, they don't need tax increment financing, in which case we don't need to provide it. However, that said, if a project does generate increment, and we need that increment to go into some other projects within the area, as long as we stay within the same urban renewal area, those dollars can go to address other infrastructure issues.
Right. So it, it is an incentive to attract and transform Littleton.
Exactly.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I do. If I'm a property owner, owning something that is already well-maintained and still identified in this area, what's in it for me to think this is a good idea to encourage the city to take this action?
Well, I think what's in it for you is, you want to see the other properties in the area that may not be as well-kept and taken care of as your property, redevelop. It's gonna increase property value. And so basically, it's gonna attract business, and you're gonna get more customers probably as a result of that.
Do I get any retroactive benefit for the money and effort I've spent on my own?
No. It doesn't, it's not a retroactive plan, it's always from this point forward. So when the plan is approved, we can't, we can't reach back. That's, that's against the statute.
So if, if I'm a business owner, and I've put my time, and I've put my effort in, and my property's really nice, there's really nothing in this for me? Other than the intangible benefit of this might be better for all?
Right. On the other hand, and you know, you've probably heard the comment that, you know, someone mentioned something about McDonald's. There's probably very little, if any, reason to even do anything with that parcel. I mean, a lot of, a property can stay in an urban renewal area and be totally unaffected by it.
But why are those included, then, in the area, in the plan?
Because we want to be able to address infrastructure around the area as well, the street right-of-way, that type of thing.
All the properties touch on a public right-of-way. And use public infrastructure.
What holds the city back from making these improvements anyway, other than probably time and the amount of projects we can tackle, given time, given our, our current financial situation?
I mean, I'd probably let Glenn address that one.
Well, actually, council's right in the midst of the budget process, but you could certainly go back and look at our draft budget. We do have a limited capital fund, so that's the funds that are set aside to do infrastructure. Certainly, that'll change with development, but we do, again, I think that catch-22 comes into effect. If these properties don't develop, revenue isn't generated, which doesn't add to our roles for capital improvements. And as you know, we also have, we just implemented a capital facilities impact fee. It's very new, but again, it runs off growth, and it's, puts in infrastructure specifically for that growth. So that's a tool, it's, it's down the road, though, as well. So that's kind of where we are today.
So without, if, if the urban renewal does not move forward, the city can still take all these actions, it will just take a significantly longer time for these things to get achieved?
I think that's fair to say, yeah.
Glenn, is it fair to say that, that the city cannot borrow against future tax revenues? Which with the tax increment, essentially, you're borrowing against future tax revenues, and the city doesn't have that ability?
I tell you the truth, I can't answer that. Maybe there's somebody smarter than me on that.
I don't, I don't believe you can do that, no.
I, that's what, my understanding is that the city cannot borrow against future tax revenues, which the tax financing opportunity can.
Urban renewal is allowed to bond against that revenue.
You can borrow against future revenues.
Right. Mark, do you have something?
One question and a comment for clarification. Let's say I'm an owner in a, in a B, existing B-zoned area north of Aspen Grove. I decide I want to improve my property, I want nothing to do with Lyft. I assume I could go into the building department, present my plans, and build my building, and ignore you. Is that correct?
That's correct, because, again, this plan does not control development, land use, or building code.
Second, I just want to make a point, you don't need to comment. There's misleading statements in the 64 pages or so of each one of the plans. It deals with trying to, I think it's a scare tactic, trying to infer that older buildings need immediate upgrades in their fire systems, or electrical systems, or mechanical systems. They don't meet current code. Let's take a building on Santa Fe that was built 20 years ago. It was built according to code, it's legal according to code, it's a legal use today, it does not need to upgrade its systems unless it's gonna do a major remodeling, and it needs to bring up its systems. So to say that the buildings need these improvements now is incorrect, misleading, and a scare tactic. Would you agree or disagree?
I disagree, of course. But I'll, I'll let Ann.
I know building codes, and I know buildings, so be careful.
Ann, you wanna, you wanna address that, because you're the one that completed the condition study, and I would rather you do it.
Yeah, I wish I, I can grab a plan, it's in the car, but it was not intended to be a scare tactic. We spoke with the fire department for the city. We asked for a list of buildings that are sprinkled and unsprinkled. We were provided that. If they're unsprinkled, then that factor attached to it, and in every public presentation we've made, we have said exactly what you said, which is, you can go on forever without a sprinkler in your building. Unless you make a major alteration, and talk that through with Public Works, what are the thresholds for that in that instance? And you can choose to not make that alteration, and therefore, you would never be subject to bringing it up to code. But should you desire to make those improvements, and you became subject to having to put that improvement in, it can be costly, and urban renewal dollars can be used to offset that cost, so that they can still afford to make the improvement.
One of the blight designations is substandard systems. Interesting in that you just agreed that older buildings that were built according to code are legal buildings.
No, I never said they weren't legal. I said every building is grandfathered in that does not have a fire system, but the police, or the fire department does keep track of which those buildings, which of them they are, so that they'll know then, that if somebody comes in for an alteration. So they are grandfathered in, therefore, they are basically, like when you have non-conforming uses that are okay, it's same sort of thing, they're okay, no problem. The point is that this is a revenue source that's available to them, and in my experience, there are numerous occasions within communities there are numerous occasions within communities where, especially in older areas, downtowns and that, where people will come in, purchase it, want to make alterations to the building, which is usually what a community desires, and then they'll bump up against those code requirements, and that cost will be enough to push them over and make the project infeasible. And so when a community has an urban renewal authority, they can come in and alleviate at least those costs for the, the person who wants to rehab the building, therefore then they can go forward with their plan, and that's pretty much all we've ever said about it.
That's enough from explanation, I still say the underlying tone implied is that these buildings are blighted because they don't have upgraded systems when they don't need them, if they maintain the use, maintain the building as is, just a comment.
And I need to reiterate that we're not here to debate the, the methods of the condition survey, that was already been approved, or else we'd be here all night, because I agree, I mean, some of the blighted terms and uses, you don't think are blighted, in other words, my house would be blighted with all the cracks in it, but that's already been approved, so we're here to debate and vote on whether it meets the comp plan.
Well, we've also been snowed with, with reams of information on, on financing, and we're not supposed to discuss financing. Questions have been raised by fellow board members about financing, we're not supposed to talk about financing, so I guess I can bring up other issues, if I so choose.
Financing.
The door has been opened.
The tool, the tool for financing is referenced in the comp plan, therefore it's a direct relation to whether it is spoken to in the comp plan. So we're addressing whether it meets the criteria of the correct comp plan.
If there aren't any no, any more general discussion questions, we can.
I have another, sorry, I have another question. Um, I think this one's to Jim, too. So an herbal, can, can you complete this sentence for me? An urban, urban renewal plan is necessary in this area because, finish that for me, and why can't it be done privately? Why in this area do we have a need for it to be a public and private commitment?
Partnership?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. If I remember your first part of this, memory's not.
Urban renewal plan is necessary because?
Well, your renewal plan is necessary, as I mentioned my, beginning of my, my introduction tonight, is to basically to cure that, a slum and blight condition, that's what the statute says. And so we are going to address the conditions that are listed that need to be taken care of within the city by implementing this plan. Now, how do you do that? We work with the private sector to do that, when they come in to redevelop a piece of property, whether they're the property owner or a developer that assembles a larger piece of property, and they can prove up that they can't do the project, it's not financially feasible, without some assistance.
Okay, we've had private enterprise in this area develop successfully without the need of a, a public partnership, so Breckenridge Brewery would be an example. So I'm, I'm struggling with understanding how that, which was just last year, is different than what is being presented to us now. Why are we in a different situation now that we feel we need this urban renewal plan?
You know, I can't address Breckenridge Brewery, because I don't know exactly what the details of that site were, and I never saw their pro forma, so I just don't know. But it's conceivable that we could have more of those. And again, that's where the analysis takes place, where we'll look at every project that comes in to make certain that there is a need, and if there isn't a need and they can do the project without the assistance of the, of the tax increment financing, then so be it. I don't believe that they will be able to do that in a lot of cases, there's a lot of infrastructure requirements, there's a drainage, the wa, what do you want to say, the water ditch that runs along Santa Fe is a major undertaking to relocate that or pipe it or that type of thing. We've got drainage issues, we've got utilities issues, so I believe it's going to be, we're going to need to address those with some increment dollars to make those projects feasible.
I have a question, do you have another question? Someone have a question for Jim?
No, go ahead.
I was, I was going to ask another.
Go ahead.
Oh. Jim, so take one of those as an example, down by Breckenridge Brewery. Let's say it's part of the urban renewal area and a plan is put together to do infrastructure work, and the revenues increase and everything's going well, and the bond is being repaid, and then for whatever reason, the underlying businesses fail. Who, at the end of the day, is responsible for the repayment of the bonds?
Bonds.
Does that, does that come back to the city? Does that come out of the, can you explain that piece of it?
I will. When we do the underwriting, we work with an underwriter, of course, when we sell bonds, and you don't necessarily have to have your renewal authority sell the bonds. A lot of times, and this is kind of a more recent model, and Anne can probably jump in here, but a lot of these projects will form a metropolitan district, a metro district, and then they have, of course, the advantage of being able to levy a mill levy on, on their behalf as well. So they could combine those mill levy dollars with tax increment dollars that, that the authority would give them and sell the bonds, which case, if the bonds were to fail, then the metro district is responsible for it. Now, when we've done it the other way, when you do, an urban renewal authority sells the bonds, they're typically structured anymore that the only source of the repayment of those bonds is the increment itself. So the people that are taking the risk here are the bond buyers.
So now, the project is sitting empty. The businesses have failed, the bonds have failed, now what happens? Does it then become the city's problem to reinvest in the asset?
Well, financially and legally, it is not the city's problem, okay, because you've been protected, there's no reach back here. The bonds are uninsured, their bonds are dependent totally on the increment. So the city's protected, the authority for that matter is protected as well. You know, when there's all, all these things are disclosed in the, in the, you know, the bonds, bond documents when they're issued. So the bondholders pretty much know what they're getting into, and they're taking a risk. Do they pay a little bit higher, get a little bit of higher interest in exchange for that risk? Yeah, typically. So that's kind of where the risk lies.
Okay, so the rules have kind of changed with the TIF financing in terms of responsibility for who's paying for it, you're.
I think we've gotten smarter.
Okay, so now, if I can tie a question back to one of the public speakers, Beau, who has a business there, walk us through, illustrate for me how an urban renewal authority can provide some benefit to his business, or is there risk to his business?
Okay, so if we're speaking in specifics to, say, the, the gas station in the coal mines area.
Right.
You know, if that project's not going to redevelop, that, that property is not going to redevelop, no one's forcing him to do that, for one thing, I want to make sure that's clear. But as the, the condition study identifies, there are infrastructure issues in the area. Uh, we've got sidewalk problems, there's some drainage issues, that type of thing in that area. So tax increment dollars generated wherever within that area, and a different project, you know, that doesn't need all the tax, we can use those tax increment dollars to address those concerns.
So I, I coached baseball there, and kids, you know, routinely will run across the street and get a soda. So improving pedestrian walkway across, putting in a signal, these kind of things, certainly that business couldn't afford to pay for a new signal or improved.
No.
Walks, but maybe the TIF financing or the urban renewal authority might be able to help provide that infrastructure.
Right, and, and something of that scale, you know, those can be paid for as a pay-as-you-go kind of thing, they don't have to be bonded either.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Jim, do you want to take a, a shot at addressing the legality of the agricultural land in the?
Sure.
Land.
Um, you know, of course, you know, legal counsel for the authority as well as the city disagrees with the points that were made earlier, and I'm going to turn that over to Christian to address that at this point.
So the city attorney's office is aware of the argument, and we do understand it, and like most issues, there are, you know, lawyers disagree, and there are arguments on both sides. We've looked at the issue and we believe that there's a very strong argument on the other side. The city attorney will be working closely with city council and advising them on this issue, and despite the arguments that have been made tonight by Ms. Nyes, we are assuring you as legal counsel for the city that you are looking at a legal plan, and you can rely on that in your evaluation of whether this plan is in conformance with the comprehensive plan.
Yeah.
Okay.
Glenn, you're off the hot seat, Jim, yeah. So Glenn, you, you know, you stated, you referred back to the staff report of, you know, why it's in conformity with the comp plan. Can you, can you take, as I look at the staff report, it's reiterating a lot of what we're seeing in the package, this is what an urban renewal plan is, et cetera. So if you can clearly call out for us how you see and thereby recommend that this is in conformity with the comp plan for X reasons, just to, again, help clarify even the intent and what our motion needs to be.
Yeah, in the staff report, what I did was try and boil down the fact that really what you're looking at is, and at our last meeting, we mentioned, we do call these urban renewal plans, but perhaps that's a misstatement, but that's what the statutes require us to call them. So in the staff report, what I said is, these are really tools, this is a set of tools to use to cause change in the community where it's identified it's needed. So I identify several sections out of the comprehensive plan where actually the term redevelopment is used. One of that er, uh, sections was quoted already, but 1.5 of the citywide plan states that identify activity areas such as those around light rail stations that might benefit from a public-private investment. Partner with private sector individuals and entities to explore, promote, and follow through with the best prospects. This is certainly a mechanism to do that. 1.7 says evaluate the redevelopment potential of blighted properties, I think LIFT has done that. Work with owners throughout the redevelopment process to encourage sustainable uses and design to optimize mitigation of possible negative effects on adjacent uses. So again, the tools of redevelopment allows us to do that. I think I mentioned at the last meeting that if that requires a zoning change, that's back before the planning board, so you can see whether we're mitigating those impacts on adjacent properties. Under land use goals and policies, develop the Santa Fe corridor as a high-quality employment-based land use area. This comes right out of, I believe, the corridor study for Santa Fe. Encourage higher quality land uses, including redevelopment of underutilized properties to higher-value land uses within the corridor. Encourage the consolidation of smaller parcels into larger land holdings that promote higher quality and value uses. Support upzoning of land only where the, these conditions are met. So I think this is a, a tool that can implement those goals as well. So basically, we do feel for those reasons that the urban renewal plans are consistent with your comprehensive plan.
Okay.
Okay. Motion?
Please vote on each one separately.
This is for the Santa Fe urban renewal plan.
I'm getting the language right, sorry, thank you. Motion to approve the resolution regarding the findings related to Santa Fe urban renewal plan and its conformance with the City of Littleton comprehensive plan.
It's been seconded, so we open it up for discussion related to the Santa Fe urban renewal plan.
I have some comments.
Sure.
I'd like to start with, first, I, you know, it reminds me of the old adage that if you're a hammer, everything you see looks like a nail that needs to be pounded down, and if you're an urban renewal consultant, everything, it looks like it's a blighted area that needs to be fixed. That aside, the planning board's authority in this matters, according to the city attorney, is to determine if the plan meets the goals of the comprehensive plan. The following is from the citywide comprehensive plan. Under vision, promote a vibrant economy for individuals, businesses, and the city as a whole. Manage and direct change. Strive for stability in economic, environmental, and social decisions. Raise the bar to increase quality of community and economic development. Under the heading Dynamic Littleton Policies, 1.1, generate more opportunities for residents to live, shop, and play where they work, and workshop and play where they live. 1.2, create the circumstances that will encourage dynamic, innovative employers to relocate within the city. 1.5, identify the activity areas such as those around light rail stations that might benefit from public-private investment. Partner with private sector individuals and entities to explore, promote, and follow through with the best prospects. Under a dynamic Littleton, 1.7, evaluate redevelopment potential of blighted properties. Work with owners throughout the redevelopment process to encourage sustainable uses and structures. Design redevelopment so that it mitigates its negative effects, if any, on adjacent properties. Under transformative actions, 1.5, attract the best possible development and redevelopment to identified areas. Employ economic and procedural devices to realize this. 2.2, use tools such as small area plans, zoning, capital improvements, and other incentives to set the stage for redevelopment and new development in designated activity areas. I'd just like to say if this plan moves forward, I'd urge city council to hold a tight rein on LIFT and, and any projects that may arise from its development. I also encourage the public to continue their scrutiny as we move forward.
I will echo, actually, he took all of the checks that I had through the comp plan as well, but you missed one.
Leave one.
It, 2.1, under transformative actions, and I, I won't read the whole thing, but it's, it talks about designated areas should be those that will have the most transformative impacts on achieving the city's vision, and San, the Santa Fe corridor has been identified and is, and is outlined here in the comprehensive plan, in the citywide plan, that it is an important corridor, an important, and within it, there are activity areas, so it, to me, it meets this definition of truly being transformative for the city, given the prominence that it has within this, the city. What I also will agree with Kurt and fully support Kurt on, I, I am a little concerned about not having specifics at this juncture, but I also am very much aware and that zoning, what actually happens here will still be presented to the bodies that need to, need to address whether that is, again, continues to be in conformity with the comprehensive plan. So it will come in front of the planning board, it will be open to public hearing, again, before anything can be developed there. So I think what we are seeing today and what we are being asked to vote on is that this is a mechanism and a tool that helps us to realize some of the goals that we have outlined in the comp plan, and as Kurt stated, in numerous points throughout the comp plan, I do believe that it does.
Aside?
I guess I'll add a comment. I echo Corina, your comments and concerns about the lack of specificity. The Santa Fe plan feels very broad-brushed. The, the concerns brought forward about the legality of which parcels are included and so on, but based on the city attorney's position, I think we're being advised very clearly that that is not an issue that's on the table that we should be concerned about. There was a comment about a traffic accident where a pedestrian was hit and killed recently. I personally know somebody who was hit and killed on Santa Fe. The infrastructure work necessary to improve our rights of way, to improve our city, make it more pedestrian-friendly, bicycle-friendly, these types of things cannot, cannot be completed by the owner of the McDonald's property. The owner of the McDonald's property cannot afford to put in improved bridges or accessways and those sorts of things. So for all the reasons that you two have outlined, and the very clear, specific question that's being posed to us, I, I think this does, in fact, comply with, and I've read cover to cover, again, both the citywide plan and the comp plan, and there are countless examples of how it, it can accomplish those things. there are countless examples of how it, it can accomplish those things, but this is clearly just a tool. And again, the question being posed to us, I think, is pretty clear, so I, I feel it does support.
Mark or Andrew? Any second? Mark?
In general, this entire process has seemed very rushed to me. The question in my mind is, will the free market make these properties suitable and good in an appropriate period of time? Or would a tool offered to the city specifically accelerate the development of these areas? And as I look, I think, in terms of callouts to the river, callouts to Santa Fe, and in terms of being an identified corridor to the specific questions, are they in conformance with the comp plan? I'm going to have to say with Santa Fe, the, the answer seems to be yes. I've also done, when I was much younger, I lived in Denver, and there were a large number of areas that have benefited significantly from urban renewal projects. And, and specifically, I, I used to live in the Highlands area, and it is an entirely different place than the place that I used to be, and I think in a very positive way, a very vibrant area. We literally live next to a crack house, and now it's a ridiculously expensive home. I, I do have some reticence towards the tool, given this, the last one produced some pretty subpar results. That Santa Fe corridor really is our, I think we called it beachfront property when we, when we did the analysis back a year ago. Would a government accelerant make this area better faster for, for the area? Do we see property owners currently putting the work in and, and deserve to be complimented by the city in terms of the infrastructure that, that they put in? And, and is there a need for the market to run its course, or is there a need for the city to step in and steer for it a little bit? And, and by no means is this a black-and-white situation, and I think that that's one of the, the luxuries, for those that, that criticize the comp plan as being too vague, is to consider each situation on its own merits, and I think that we have the, the potential to do that. So in, in terms of the direct question, is it in conformance with the comp plan with Santa Fe, I think, I think the answer to that is, is it is.
Mark?
Well, I want to discuss a template. I feel these urban renewal plans are an anywhere USA template, and Littleton is being shoved through this template. I feel the 13 criteria used to justify blight is a template so nebulous that virtually any property in Littleton can be classified as blighted. I feel personally insulted, and I think Littleton citizens should be as well. It's also contrary to our history. The template designates bona fide properties as being blighted. It also shoves inappropriate properties into the renewal area plans. But we're supposed to judge this by the comprehensive, by the, by the sections of the comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plan is a citywide comprehensive plan. It was written over a two-year period. We spent a lot of time boiling down citizen comments in order to write the citywide plan. It was purposely kept very vague in general. I was concerned at the time about the vagueness of the, of the citywide plan, but I was told that down the road, we would do our small-area plans, corridor plans, and activity area plans. That would be the, would flesh out the comprehensive plan, providing the meat we need to, to help the city. What has happened in the last nine months is we've been sitting on our thumbs doing nothing. We haven't touched any of the small-area plans, activity areas, or the corridor studies. So all we have to rely on is a very light, not full of specifics, comprehensive plan, citywide comprehensive plan. So that's all we have. So let's try to justify the urban renewal plans before us. Others have made points that are in the plan, some that I underlined, respect and build upon its history. Excuse me, but the history of Littleton has not been urban renewal. Foster a small-town, family-friendly character. Urban renewal is small town. Promote a vibrant economy for individuals, businesses, and the city as a whole. Maybe Lyft can succeed this time where they, where they have failed before. Raise the bar to increase the quality of community and economic development. Lyft is definitely raising the bar. Use tools such as small-area plans, zoning, capital improvements, and other incentives to set the stage for redevelopment and new development designated activity areas and corridors. Lyft is meeting the language of this transformative action. So in my mind, the compliance of these plans, the comprehensive plan, is somewhat of a mixed bag. Although I am sure that citizens who wrote down ideas of Littleton's future on sticky notes to be included in the comprehensive plan, they were not thinking about urban renewal. My conclusions are, urban renewal is a tough task. It takes careful, methodical consensus-building and buy-in from the community, not just for votes on, on city council. It takes energy, creativity, patience, fortitude, inspiration, and perspiration to pull it off. I'm afraid that Lyft has not built consensus in Littleton, and that is why I feel that Littleton, that Lyft will not succeed. Lyft has not proven to my satisfaction that history can be forgotten, that they are now ready, able this time to succeed, to successfully guide redevelopment in new urban renewal areas. I will vote in favor of Columbine Square, but I will cast a no vote for Santa Fe corridor. Redevelopment in this, in the Santa Fe corridor has already progressed the old-fashioned way, with the Breckenridge Brewery, Haspen Grove, designed by Sundown, McDonald's, the Car Wash, the new gas stations, Bridge House, Denver Seminary, Riverbend, Hudson Gardens, and Santa Fe Spirits, being developed without holding a handout to the city for help. I was involved with all these projects. Further development will take place along this corridor regardless of what Lyft contributes. The property along the corridor is too valuable not to be developed. Enzer, the RTD parking lot, and the business-zoned areas north of the Breckenridge Brewery will be developed or redeveloped soon. I say let the market dictate the market. It already is.
Thank you. I just have a few comments. Whether or not we agree or disagree that the process was the right process, that the criteria for selection was appropriate and the appropriate properties were selected, unfortunately, has already passed. I agree that it, it may have been, there may have been some steps that could have been added to improve communication with the public, with the board. We do have a Santa Fe corridor plan. It's, it's ancient, like a lot of them, but it is there. It would have been nice to move faster on the neighborhood plans and maybe accelerate the Santa Fe corridor plan, either by a board effort or by a consultant effort. But we're, as a board, we're given direction through, by council and by statute. So we're here to evaluate whether it's criteria, meets the criteria of the comp plan. We've already heard several of the conditions or the goals in the comp plan that it does And a comp plan is a guide to city development. It's our vision. It's broad brush. The urban renewal plan would be a tool for development, whether it's used on every development or not, doesn't matter. It's there available to improve the city as a whole because of improvements that can be made that otherwise may not be made. Zoning and regulations are standards for development. They're the rules by which we play, by which developers design and submit proposals. Staff evaluates whether they're meeting those criterias. Those aren't going anywhere. Every single project in these areas, as well as outside the areas, still have to be scrutinized through zoning and regulations. The staff, the board, us, and council are the stewards of good development. So we're talking about tools, we're talking about what-ifs, we're talking about doomsday scenarios, but our comp plan talks about transformation, improving the city, moving it forward, keeping the history of our city, but moving it forward. And this is just a tool that, in reality, maybe it's never used, but that's not going to happen, but nobody's forced, nobody's arms twisted to use it, to utilize the funds. But there are cases, and we've already said, there are thousands of urban renewal districts and plans throughout the United States of America that have transformed small rural communities, that have maintained their small rural character. So if we truly, as a board, support what we drafted, what we approved, and we want to do things that would implement our comp plan, then this is a tool. The important part, I feel, and has already been stated by others, is that the citizens, the board, the staff, watch with hawkish eyes on the urban renewal board, that the council be the stewards that they need to be, and not allow inappropriate bonds or inappropriate projects, that we don't repeat the past. Riverfront was, how many years ago? Times change. Financing improves, regulations improve for monitoring bonds. If we have a good financial person in our city, what are they calling, financial chief? I don't know. And we have eyes, that's a problem, is the eyes are taken off of these processes and things get slipped through. So that's, as stewards of the city's submittals, then that's our responsibility is to watch. That's your responsibility is to watch and make sure that the plans are, are being, or the funds are being used properly, show up at the urban renewal board meetings. So I don't need to say it again, I also agree that it, it meets the criteria of the comp plan. If there's no further discussion, we can cast a vote. So the Santa Fe Urban Renewal Plan passes. We'll now take up the Columbine Urban Renewal Plan. I'm sure that a lot of the same discussion has already been said, but there might be some specifics related to that. Do we have a motion on that?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution regarding the findings related to the Columbine Square Urban Renewal Plan and its conformance with the City of Littleton Comprehensive Plan.
Second?
We have a second. Any discussion? Floor is open.
Okay. Mark?
As I mentioned, I'm in favor of Columbine Square Renewal Plan. Even though the owner has let the center fall into decay without doing much more than painting over rotted wood, basically, it's somewhat of a self-induced hardship here, somewhat. It's also market forces have driven this center into decay, and something needs to be done with this black hole. I feel that this is a, a small enough area to give Lyft a chance to prove themselves that they can handle and manage, not manage, but direct urban renewal improvements to, to this area. However, I, I hope in return for investing in infrastructure and surrounding improvements that Littleton should expect more in return, a more, a higher creative development, more than just cell block 17 apartment complexes that I, that I saw in a proposed plan that never reached us. But it's a small enough plan, I'm willing to give Lyft a chance to prove themselves.
I've driven by both sides of this property, safe to say, two times for the last 13 years, two times a day for the last 13 years. And I've seen the various property owners make some significant improvements to the Conoco Station. Yes, thank you. I appreciate that very much. It, it is much better, it's much more palatable, much more enjoyable to go into the store. In those 13 years, other than, as Mr. Rudnicki points out, the paint on the doors and I'll acknowledge a fresh coat of asphalt on the parking lot, I've seen very little happen at the Columbine Square. And so I'm not convinced that the free market has run its course, because I think one of the actors in the free market has not done their part there. On the other side, O'Toole's, I've been in there 57 times a year, buying various things, and I've seen significant effort to the, the Conoco Station, to the, where the Toe Tavern is, I've seen some improvements there. You know, and, and even though we do have a strange pairing of a four-wheel-drive shop and a dance studio in the same building, living next to each other, we've also seen improvements by the property owners there. And so there's a question of fairness here that just doesn't seem right. If I'm a property owner and I put my time in and I put my work in, I expect the city to do their part and to make the infrastructure work for me, specifically in the areas that have already improved. And, and if it's simply a matter of time and resources, I think the city should direct its time and resources to helping those who are helping themselves and not adding incentive to those who are, who are not doing their part. I, I just don't think it's, it's, it's very fair to those who have been willing to take that, that private-market approach. And so I would say that I am against the urban renewal of the Columbine Square area for those reasons.
Anything else?
Oh, and I have one more thing to add. Additionally, relative to the specific question of, of whether it's complacent or conformance with the comp plan, the Goddard Plan is updated as a very low priority for update. And so between that, as well as the various maps, Figure E on page eight, there is absolutely no designation, nor during any of the time in the past two to three years that we've been talking about this, have we had any discussion about that area being an area of focus, other than a general agreement that it's not good. It is not presently in conformance with the plan for that reason.
I would have, I would have to agree that the Columbine area is unusual, and why it was selected over other areas in the city that seem to be of equal need of attention. Littleton corridor, Broadway seems to be doing okay. A lot of car dealers, they motivate other businesses. But again, we're not here to decide whether it's the right place to go for, for a plan. So I would, I would kind of agree with your sentiment that it, it could very well happen on its own, but that's already been decided, and I just wanted to make that statement. If there's no other discussion, that's vote. So the Columbine Plan passes. That is all we have on the agenda, unless Glenn, let's see here. All we have is general business. I want to thank everyone. I want to thank everybody for coming out, and this moves to council next, so be sure and be there. Glenn, is there any general business?
Well, we do have an item, just to give you an update on the neighborhood plans.
Okay.
And perhaps Karina might want to chime in as well. We have settled on October 2nd at Heritage High to have our first meeting with Heritage Neighborhood. It will be in their second floor, I can't remember, but they have a meeting area, second floor Heritage High. So, we just got that confirmed today. But I know Karina's had a chance to meet with Dennis. We've also brought in a little bit of help to help facilitate those meetings, Matt Whitern. So, I wasn't able to make that meeting, but perhaps Karina, if you want to give the board a little bit of an update of...
Sure. So, a couple of things that we talked about and prioritized for that meeting was the importance of getting the word out to ensure that we get a good turnout. And so, some of the things that are happening, there are going to be postcards that are going to go to the homeowners in that area and other businesses or organizations in that area. There will, there will be an article in the Littleton Report, as well as the Littleton Independent, right? And as well as on Nextdoor and from a social media and the websites and everything else. So, it, I think we're really trying to ensure we use every vehicle possible to make people aware of what is going to take place. We've also discussed, and, but we didn't conclude on what we will make available to the public before the meeting. One of the things that we, you know, I felt we should do is, you know, it's not about giving them a teaser, but it's like, let me explain to you what we're really trying to do. Here are some documents you can look at, refer to the old heritage plan, so that they, again, familiarize themselves and thereby get more vested in wanting to join, contribute, and give an opinion, and be more informed as they come in for that. The other point that we also want to stress, and I think this will come out, will have to come out more on how we facilitate the meeting, is going to be that they, the ownership is for them to have, for them to feel like they can own and contribute to this, and that it is not us talking to them, but it's more of us listening to what they want to contribute for us then to be the stewards to bring that together into a plan. So, we will be meeting, hopefully, next week to strategize a little bit more about the facilitation process and then what is, you know, how we set up that evening, so to speak, so that we can gather some of that information. So, any thoughts or inputs welcomed. I think one of the things with Heritage may be one of the easier ones. So, I think it's a good one to, it's an easier one to start with, I think. It's not as contentious, and nor does it have such a broad and diverse constituents that would be a little bit, you know, harder to do in the first shot.
Sorry, a way that you can get, or have you figured out a way to get the neighborhood, the old neighborhood plan to the neighbors? Do you just have it online? Or is there something else?
I think the plan is to have it online for, so that they can, you know, they can go to our website. It should be, actually, it should...
It is on our website now.
It's on our website, so, but help them to get there. Don't you say, "Go to our website and go find it." It's like a specific link or something.
Is it part of the postcard that you can see the old plan reference?
No, so what I would expect to happen on the postcard, there's going to be a link or a website or a URL to say, "Go to this URL to find out more about what this is."
This would be really good if they do read the thing.
I agree.
A lot of it is still...
Because it would be hard to come in blind and just say, "Oh, okay," you know, there's, it's, I find it's easier to provide input if I already have something to react to. And right now, what they have to react to is, you know, what was done in the past and...
And also because I think a zoning map is my bible, probably the only one that thinks that way. Is there also maybe a link to look at zoning for those that want to in that area?
Well, I'd like to have a big plan on the...
Oh, yeah.
We can bring the big map, you betcha. If it will excite you.
Awesome. So, some of the other...
Let's not make it too big.
The other documents are the demographics information that we got.
All the demographic data, we can also, I was just thinking that that would be a great exhibit, because it kind of points at trends.
Right, and, you know, the presentation I did, we want to maybe take some pieces of that, we don't want to present that. But we talked about how do we synthesize that in such a way to use it to just stimulate some thought, but not to say, "This is what we're thinking," right? So, here's how you can think about some things that are strengths. We know that the schools in this neighborhood are top-rated, et cetera, so we know this is a strength for our neighborhood and what drives people to want to purchase homes in that neighborhood, et cetera. So, use it in that format. But we do want to try to gather the information so that we could put it in those boxes, because if we just kind of say, "What do you think?", then we get a lot, and then it's hard to categorize and make it useful.
Is this going to be, is there an audiovisual presentation, or is it just on a chalkboard? Or what, how do you see that in that room?
One of the things I think you talked about is utilizing our audience response system, you know, where you have the clicker, so, and I think maybe the idea was to identify trends, or perhaps walk through the current plan and see if it still reaches people, and folks can actually, you know, say they like it or not, or it should change.
It might be helpful to have some three-by-five cards that those that aren't technologically...
Both.
And the sticky notes, I think.
Sticky notes or cards they can write and leave those comments, rather than have to get up and present their...
I think the sticky notes have worked well in the past, too.
There are other issues that we can't think of, they'll come up with.
I think the critical thing is to get people there, to have participation. So, I mean, if it's us, and there's two people, you know, then that's not really accomplishing much, so I don't know how we, beyond the marketing that we're doing, and if there's a way to get the word out in such a way that we can actually get some real participation.
So, we also talked about, so especially for those of us that live in those neighborhoods that we're going to be working on, you know, trying to identify maybe some informal leaders in the neighborhood that have a network within the neighborhood. So, whether that might be maybe some of the churches, or it could be just that person that's in the neighborhood that knows everything that's going on in the neighborhood, and knows this person, and that person, and that person. So, just to activate some of that, you know, somewhat grass, from a grassroots perspective. So, you know, reach out to the people that I know that know a lot of people in that neighborhood that, you know...
So, is there a way, I mean, there's, and maybe we're already doing this, but there's a lot of, there's townhouse projects, and there's different HOAs, I presume, within, for example...
Not in Heritage.
Not in Heritage? There aren't many?
Not that I can, there might be one for the one on Ridge.
Yeah.
The one on Ridge.
Yeah. Ridge and Windermere, I mean, I used to mow the lawns in the condo project right there.
So, I think on Ridge might be the only, I don't know what those developments are called, but they might have an HOI we can check into, I don't know.
But we'll send a card to every address. So, whether it's a renter or what, they will get a card inviting them to the meeting.
But I think what we're trying to say here, Glenn, is if there is some organ, you know, groups, that even though they're individuals, but that leader of that group, whether formal or informal, they can say, they can call Betty and Sue and John and say, "Hey, guys, you got this in the mail, don't throw it away, here's what it is, I'm going to be going, hey, why don't you guys come too?" type of thing.
Yeah, and we do have a database of those HOAs and contacts, too, so we can reach out to them.
Specifically, reaching out to those HOAs to make sure they understand what's going on, and that they ought to have a seat at the table. And then, the other component that we've talked about is the major stakeholders, like somebody from Heritage High School should be there.
Right.
If there's larger commercial property owners in these neighborhoods, you know, they ought to be part of the discussion.
One of the questions that was posed to me by Dennis is, Karina, do you want to call these people? And I think what we should probably do is identify who, because I think it's divide and conquer, a little bit from effort perspective and a little bit from what it looks like or what it's perceived by. If, I think Glenn is calling, you know, my neighbor down the street, they might be like, "Who's Glenn?", and, you know, then it's coming from the city. Whereas, if I'm reaching out to them, it's, "I need you there to help us in me, in the role that I'm in the planning board, to help build this plan from the neighborhood, from the citizens." Whereas, maybe, you know, the leaders of Heritage, or, you know, maybe that's something...
Leaders of the churches.
Of the churches could come from the city staff, yeah.
Yeah.
Would it be, it would be disarming if perhaps, you know, you being the, you know, the ramrod of that area to perhaps speak in the beginning, maybe put people at ease a little bit? I'm a resident...
Yeah, so what the expectation is, is that we actually facilitate those meetings. So, we will, you know, I did talk to Dennis, and he has asked that, at least for Heritage, because that's the one that I'm responsible for, that I would facilitate that conversation. So, again, it's more informal, you know, we are here together to build this together, it's not, you know, dictated by city staff, or et cetera. And so, we will all have that responsibility, yes.
I'm sorry, did you say you would facilitate this meeting? Or are we going to have a professional facilitator here?
I would much prefer to have Karina do it. I think, or at least what Dennis told me, is that perhaps we were looking at this, you know, our hired gun to do that, and I would prefer not to.
She's more expensive than the...
So, I think we will have resources available to us there that are going to administratively help with note-taking, and, but it's, I think, the role that we are being asked to play is more than just introducing it, but helping to engage the audience as an equal.
No, if you're willing to do that, I think that'd be great.
Yeah, it's not just me, you're going to do it for your neighborhood, too.
It's much more of an empowerment move to do it that way, to say, "This is your neighborhood, this is your plan." You know, this is our chance to tell the city what we want, not the city's chance to tell us what we want.
Yeah, and I think something that we can do is, I think we can tag team, so it's not just Karina. So, it's Karina, and maybe I'll ask Randy to help me out, so that, you know, creating that dialogue and passing it back and forth between two of us, it just makes it a little bit more interactive, as opposed to, again, me talking to you, and just more dynamic, more interesting, and we can pass the potato.
So, Heritage is probably one of the only neighborhoods that we could even do this on, but there's only, I was trying to count them, five or six access points into that neighborhood? You could almost post, like they do in our neighborhood, HOA meeting tonight, you could almost post a placard at the entry into Windermere, Euclid...
What about the flashing bus, not the bus, the sign?
I have seen those for events.
Costs a lot more.
I don't know if we rent those, or whether we own those, but I'll find out.
But you always see the signs.
Whenever we have something downtown, we have the flashing sign.
People going home from work for the whole week before, they see that sign, or some kind of sign, I don't know.
And if we want them to be effective, I mean, the more exposure we get, the better.
You may not read your mail on time, but you'll pass that sign.
Hey, you see that?
Hey, can we convert the speed limit indicators into announcements?
That'd be great, that one flashes at me all the time.
You're going 40 miles an hour. Thank you.
So, here was the, here was the other question that was posed. We talked about, remember how the, you know, some of the corridors are going to collide or intersect with the neighborhoods? And so, would this be the time to include some of those key corridor partners? So, think about, for Heritage, it might be that Office Park that's on Broadway and Dry Creek, more or less?
Dry Creek Office Park there, behind Old Marie Andrews.
Yeah, so, you know, technically, they're part of the corridor, but I think they have a relationship with the neighborhood, and my opinion is, the sooner the better. It doesn't mean that's the only time we're going to be talking to them, but I think if they're there, they can also help, you know, they can hear some of the comments from the neighborhood, and I think it gives them an opportunity to also voice their opinions and positions, too.
Far too long in the past, we've always separated, you know, neighborhood citizens and commercial, and it's like this, like this glass wall in between.
Right, and I think it should be quite the opposite.
Yeah, should be the opposite.
Yep.
It'd be interesting to see if that Office Park has a management company that has contact with all of them. Usually, when there's a management company, if it was all built by the same developer, that could send out an email blast to all their clients. If not, then there's a lot of different places to contact, so...
So, I presume the building owner would receive notice, correct?
Yeah.
This is news to me, but I didn't know that we were going to stretch out beyond, but if we do, then, yeah, it would be, it'd be the owners that would get the notice.
Some of the things we learn in this neighborhood plan, we can apply to the corridor studies, obviously, down the road, you could start.
Well, and again, this goes to an underlying point that I see all the time, is those commercial properties probably pay collectively more in tax than majority of the residences, if not all of the residences combined, I'm hazarding a guess, but I can tell you, they should be a stakeholder at the table. If we're talking about that neighborhood and what people are wanting to see, they ought to, you know, talk about what's important to them. You know, do they have vandalism issues, are there, you know, what's going on? Is it the legal trail that's causing problems for their tenants? You know, I don't know, are there kids out there smoking, you know, whatever. I mean, these are the kind of things that we ought to get out there and try to figure out how we can help as the city solve issues for them. So, I think it'd be really important to have them there.
Possible, yeah.
So, Glenn, can we have, we can try to, I can make myself available next week for, you know, you, yourself, Dennis, and whoever else. Can you have a list of, you know, who is going to be, so, obviously, all the citizens, and then can we identify all the churches, all the schools? I think we already have some of these commercial constituents that we would also, just to see if we're missing anyone. Can you compile a list, and then we can...
Sure.
See if we got them all.
I mostly think it'd be easy to pull it by, from the assessor, you know, identifying who...
That's what we do, basically, yeah.
Another, another question.
At least the part I remember was, we had talked about it, and I think we didn't want to have too much crossover. I mean, I hear what you're saying, so, and maybe Dennis has already planned for that, so...
It was, we questioned it at the last meeting, but we didn't take any action. So, I think the action we should take, and hearing from the board as well, I think everyone's supportive of bringing them together now.
Okay.
One more question came up, then. So, let's talk about Heritage, for example. This school, Heritage High School. We are called the Heritage Neighborhood, we're going to have the meeting at Heritage, we will ask, you know, property owners in that neighborhood boundary, but there are people impacted by Heritage High School, which is in our boundaries, that aren't in the Heritage Neighborhood. So, families that are coming from Southbridge, for example, that take their kids to Heritage High School, should they also have a voice there, because they do not live in the Heritage Neighborhood, but they have, they live their lives in Heritage Neighborhood?
We're not checking IDs.
No.
They never have.
No, but, you know...
More the merrier.
Should we invite them?
How do you do that? Where do you stop?
Because then you're, yeah...
If you've got the flashing sign out, they'll see it.
So, a way that we can...
We have Heritage High School people that live in Highlands Ranch, so...
Yeah, so, a way that we would reach them is, if we reach out to Heritage High School, the principal or whoever else, say, "Can you send an email or in your communication to your newsletters, whatever they have, make, you know, your families aware that there is this discussion going on? It's not specific to Heritage High School, but it's about the Heritage Neighborhood that Heritage resides in."
What's the date?
October 2nd.
I wouldn't think there'd be an avalanche of Heritage High School parents coming, you know, live in Highlands Ranch, coming to this meeting, but there might be some, so, but...
It wouldn't just be Heritage. We'd do that with Runyon, and we'd do that with, you could do that with the churches, and you could do that, yeah. So, we may have a lot more people than we think.
Oh, you're just trying to pack the house, I got it.
Who's providing the food?
I don't think, I don't know, we didn't talk about food.
Randy is making cookies.
I think the facilitator should...
I'll bake cookies.
I think salt and crackers will sound good.
I'll have my kids to eliminate that, how about that?
All right, just because I brought it up, I was curious. So, the Kellogg Building alone, their taxes are $350,000, real estate taxes. So, yeah, I would think if we're talking about stuff in their area, just that building owner alone would want to hear what we're discussing.
There'd be a lot of people that live in Heritage who work over there.
So, add the other buildings in that little conglomerate, it's probably a million bucks.
Oh, easy.
So, what I heard, Glenn, is that we're going to invite... So what I heard, Glenn, is that we're going to invite business owners that are on the corridor.
On the edges.
Okay.
As well as extend the invite to families that have a vested interest in that area, which means the high school families and the elementary school families and the church families that may not live there, but still come here and there.
And that would be subject to LPS doing that, so we, we can ask LPS.
Yeah, we can ask, right. Ask, okay.
Putting it in the calendar. Okay, is that it?
Oh, I...
Sorry.
I went to the, I'm just, I'm coming from the town, downtown Colorado, what was it?
Inc., was it?
Okay, thank you. Downtown Colorado Inc., conference that took place in Fort Collins, and it was really great. It was really great. I unfortunately couldn't stay for the whole thing. There were some other things that I wanted to participate in this afternoon, but I guess I'll, I'll share more. I took flyers, and I'm going to get presentations and things like that to, to share with you guys, but I encourage us, when you can, to attend some of those. One of the things that I felt we did a lot with Urban Renewal Plan that came in front of us is that we're learning about it through the public hearing process, and it would have been, I think, more efficient and effective use of all of our time if we were able to learn about just urban renewal in general, in a study session, than to have to ask these types of questions in the public hearing. When we come to the public hearing, it really should be about the question that's posed to us, and some of these conferences help provide that education. But I think we could do it in other ways as well. So, I know, you know, when you can, and it's hard for, you know, we all have a day job. I don't right now, so that's why I was able to go, but it's, you know, find, try to find the time to attend some of those, especially the ones that are a little bit closer to home. And there are, I'll share this as well, there are different ways we can do that. It's not just going to a two-day conference. There's, you can do it as a webinar. There's little mini sessions that are in Denver that's only for like four hours. So the ones that become more relevant for us, because we know it's going to come in front of us, it's just a, a good way to get educated and better informed.
Just a couple of quick things. A couple of weeks ago, my, my wife and I actually drove into downtown Longmont. I've always skirted Longmont.
Where you been?
I was like, "Where have I been?" It's so far away. But, you know, I've always skirted the, just the, the outer roads, but finally went to downtown Longmont, was quite impressed if you've never been there, and it sounds like maybe you all have. But it was very impressive, maybe some urban renewal there, and, whoa, what a vibrant downtown, worth looking at. I was quite impressed. Secondly, Kent Bagley asked me to mention the Union Station Tour. If you haven't signed up, really sign up, you need to go see this jewel.
When is that?
Towards the end of the month.
Twenty-seventh.
Twenty, thank you.
Saturday, the 27th, yeah.
He'd like to know by tomorrow, too, if you...
I'm out of town.
I cannot. Because he's getting tickets.
I'd like to do it. The day doesn't work.
What time was it at?
The great ice cream shop inside.
Eight o'clock in the morning or something.
Eight-thirty.
Would you give me some?
It's in the morning.
I'll bring it to you.
Eight-thirty, Light Rail.
Light Rail, free, free ride.
Early Saturday morning.
So, anyway, that my duty, hopefully some of council wants to go and perhaps staff is invited and...
Who's, who said?
We were also invited to something on a Friday morning. It's in my calendar, but I don't know what it is, at ACC.
It's at the end of the month, isn't it?
Oh, it's an economic development meeting.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Oh, is that the futurists speaking?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, two quick items. Glenn, I don't know if I was just not around or I was absent or something. Did we ever meet with lift?
No.
We've never met with lift.
No. Part of that was just so the two worlds don't come too close together. Now, we had actually, had hoped to do a study session with the director to kind of talk through the process.
Okay.
Yeah, that was requested early on. It didn't happen, though, and...
I think we should still make that happen. We know, we know more is going to come in front of us.
There will be other district or areas, maybe not real quick, but I, I, I don't know, we don't want to get into a debate, but, you know, the, the things that were in the past and we couldn't really discuss, it would have been nice...
Yeah.
...to be a part of earlier. So we weren't kind of having to defend something we may not totally agree with, but...
Right.
The other item is September 22nd, Karina, if you're around, you'll need a chair. The applicant's Littleton Village, and they're my client, so I won't be able to be here.
Oh.
Littleton Village?
Yeah.
So that's already on the agenda?
Housing, housing in the rear.
All the single-family and townhouses.
That's already on the agenda?
Right now, they're tentatively on the agenda. We also have a zoning case as well that night, so you'll see the preliminary plans.
But I won't be here at all because I'll be out of town anyway, so.
Oh, you're not going to be standing down there? We can rip you to shreds.
I can't do that either. I, I'd be winking at you. Vote for me.
I have a question about our city email available to the public. Are we to take and read those comments from the public?
Now, there's a couple of rules that go with that that tie back to the training we had early on. If it's a quasi judicial matter, such as a zoning case, where you're doing something and making a decision on a specific piece of property, you have to, first, I would recommend you not enter into a email dialogue with, with whoever that is. And I'd recommend you copy staff so that staff can divulge it to everybody that we received these comments.
Maybe we'll get a chance.
So those are the main things. Now, on a comprehensive plan, Kristen, kick me if I'm wrong, but you can, you're a little bit more open to have conversations because that's more of an administrative item and doesn't affect a specific piece of property.
What's...
Unless you make a comment that might be construed later on as being, involving a particular property.
Right.
I would just say, I would caution everybody to not comment at all.
Open up more risk than it is worth. So what is the value of us being available for contact?
In some ways, it skips going through me. I think that was part of the concern, or it skips going through staff.
Is it required by some disclosure that we be available or... A legal thing? I'm sorry. Is it a legal thing that we have to be available by email?
I don't think it's a legal thing that you have to be.
In terms of disclosure?
No, I mean, you're given city emails. You're the only board, other than council, that's giving city emails, and I don't know why that distinction was made that was done before I, before I came. I will just say that with the emails, it's the same, you know, rules are in play as if someone walks up to you in the grocery store and wants to talk to you about the rezoning that's coming before you. You know, the, the same sort of response that, you know, that's a quasi judicial matter, please come to the public hearing, so that the entire board and the applicant can hear your objections or praise or whatever it is. And so it's sort of this, just think about it as if I'm in the grocery store and I'm wearing my judge's robes because it's a quasi judicial matter, that we need to have all of that information, you know, evenly available to the entire board and to the applicant so that they can rebut it.
So if something comes to one individual board member, it should be shared with all, right?
Well, what I would suggest you do is then you just respond back to the person and copy, and Glenn, and say, "I'm encouraging you to come to the, the hearing on the 22nd to, to, to give your testimony, and I'm copying Glenn so that that information can be avail, be made available to the board and the public and the applicant, so that everyone has the same information."
Will our answer ever really deviate from what you just said?
It really probably shouldn't, yeah.
And how about following an action, like we took action tonight? If somebody stopped us in the store and said, "Hey, you know, I wanted to comment on how that went."
Well, I mean, then, again...
Made a bad decision, whatever.
You know, I mean, again, you act as a board, you're a single body, so I, I think the response then is, you know, we, we took our action, and I don't speak for the board, and, you know, our actions are on videos, online. You're welcome to go and listen to our debate, and, you know, everyone had well thought out, I thought, commentary that, that you can hear word for word on the video, so.
This is, this is after a decision has been made? I, I always assumed that after a decision was made, we're free to talk about our decision with any constituent.
You certainly can, if you want. I mean, but the, the decision of the board stands and what, you know, your interpretation of it is...
But if I'm buying gas from Bo, and I go in there and Bo asks me some questions about the decision, I mean, in my free day, have that conversation at that point?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have one thing, unless you have something else that you skipped over me, so.
Oh, sorry. Karina says she can't chair.
Ah, then our rule is by seniority, and I think we believe that's Kurt Samuelson.
What?
As far as tenure on the board, that's...
We'll work that out, we'll work that out, yeah.
I guess we could take volunteers to it.
Okay, okay, Glenn, what do you have?
We received a, an award from APA Colorado. That's the local chapter of the American Planning Association for Inspire Littleton. That was the process that you used to create the citywide plan. So I know your citizens sometimes disagree, but your peers think you did a great job, so congratulations. I don't know if anybody signed up for the AP. It's Incrested Butte, so it's, it's a drive. It's first week of October. You know, I think we have two staff members going. They'll certainly accept the award unless somebody here would like to go and accept that prestigious award.
Haven't decided. Getting kind of late, isn't it?
What was Bud Light that was...